So we don't, we don't know where the mayor is right now, so we're going to just get started. Okay?
Okay.
All right. Okay, we're opening the work session for today, February 11th, and roll call, please.
Commissioner Smith?
Here.
Commissioner Mom?
Here.
Commissioner Roth?
Here.
Commissioner Polly?
Here.
Mayor Neely.
Okay, future agenda items, does anybody have anything?
I don't know, it's on the list already, but if we've got meetings like this where there doesn't seem to be a lot going on, I'd like to talk about the charter.
The charter review, okay. All right, anything else?
Can you clarify that?
Well, I'd like to bring it to a work session, so we can actually start on it. I know it's on the list.
Oh, okay, okay. I thought our direction was that Kathy Roth and Betty Mom would get together with staff, and then we would decide what we wanted to do, and then bring it to a work session. That was, that was.
That was what we talked about at the goal retreat.
Right.
Yeah. So I guess, when is that going to happen?
It's on my to-do list.
Okay, all right, all right. So we just want to make sure it doesn't fall off the to-do list.
No, it's there.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
That's good.
Thank you.
Okay, any other future agenda items?
No.
Okay, hearing none, we'll move into discussion items. I'm assuming this is Tony with Willamette Falls Legacy Project.
Thank you, good evening. So tonight, we'd like to provide an update on the Willamette Falls Legacy Project, where we're at in the process, talk a little bit about the, what we've heard to date, the plan that we've put together, the Willamette Falls land use process that will be coming forward, and then tonight, we have obviously Mike Xylas from Walker-Macy to present, and Matt Brown from Locai, and talk a little bit about some of the economics of the site, and some of the ways to start thinking about the public-private partnerships, the public-public partnerships, the investments that are going to be necessary, and really, you know, please feel free to ask any questions while we're going through this. We're really here to try and update you, bring you up to speed, answer any questions that you may have about why we're doing something, or what the thought processes behind that. Because, you know, it's been quite a whirlwind. It's been just about three years to the day.
It has been a whirlwind.
You know, Mike and his team have pulled off an amazing public participation process to come up with a plan that has quite a bit of consensus. The amount of outreach and input that was received, I think the thoughtfulness that went into what we heard, and how that was incorporated into the options, and always maintaining those four values, which has served us very, very well to this point. And I don't know if you may recall, it's been a while, but we, you know, we had those four circles.
Yes.
And there was that one point in the middle where they all overlapped, and that was where the hard decisions were. Well, you know, till now, it's been relatively easy, honestly. And it's getting to the point where, you know, the bankruptcy trustees getting to a point where our agreement with him is going to come up. We've had two offers that have fallen through on the property. Some decisions are going to be, going to be happening, they're going to be happening fast. So please, ask questions about where we're heading, why we're doing it, just so you are up to speed. Because, you know, we're trying to keep the momentum that we've built to date going, and we're going to be entering into a phase where partnerships and solidifying those partnerships and identifying funding and having complete support are going to be critical for the public side. So Christina, did you want to add anything?
Just want to add, as, at the end of the presentation, I'll go a little bit through the land use process, and where you'll be involved, and what the planning commission will look at. And there are two slides tonight talking about the master plan land use application, as well as the vision and strategy report. We purposely kind of broken this project into two reports. They both have their own purposes, and so I'm happy to talk about that more in detail if you have additional questions after the presentation.
And this won't be your last work session on this, so we will be back in front of you again. I think we have two more scheduled, so.
Tony, if I might, also, when Tony was mentioning the challenges that are ahead, as I said in our last meeting in my reports, the commitments that the local governments and all the regional partners are going to have to make are going to become more real and bigger, because they're going to be the public access piece that we all know is more of a public infrastructure commitment. And so those partnerships and the political relationships, actually, that many of you have with some of the other officials, those would be ones that we will be working very hard on, and there'll probably be opportunities for you to have dialogue individually and as groups with them. And all the partners have been very diligent about coming to the partnership meetings, and there's been lots of consensus there, even among some people that you wouldn't, you might be surprised by, so I think that that's good. I feel good about that, but it is going to be some heavy lifting for all of us, I think, to get through this next phase.
Actually, before you get started, I wanted to maybe talk about the event that had to be canceled because of weather, and so.
Yes, unfortunately, we, like many people, were caught in the storm on Thursday. Keane has graciously opened their lobby again for March 6th, which is the March 1st Thursday. We will be, we're just finalizing that coordination.
Okay.
We hope to send out a new invitation to everybody that previously was invited and noticed it. Pretty much, it's going to be the same event, we'll just have it on March 1st Thursday. So you'll start seeing some new communication on that matter very soon.
Okay, great, thank you, okay.
I think part of, part of what you'll hear tonight as well, and is that, you know, that there, I think that the roles that each of us play, not only as staff, or the city manager, or the commission, but each of the partners, are really going to start to take shape, and, you know, that's where we start talking about these commitments that need to be made, these partnerships that need to be committed to. And then also, so Carol and Doug have seen most of this presentation at the partners' group meeting. So if there's anything that you want to interject from what you've heard through those partners, it may be helpful for the others as we're going through as well, since you've kind of seen a lot of this. So with that, I will turn it over.
Evening, Mike Xylas from Walker-Macy. As Tony said, we've accomplished a lot together in formulating the framework plan, and what I'd like to do is just really briefly go through the components of the plan, and please, this is a work session, so please ask questions, and we can go back. And then, as Christina said, we want to focus a lot of time on Matt's part relative to the economics and the partnerships, because that's really where the next kind of look needs to be. And we've been fortunate to get some new photographs, too, so we've got some really great new shots of the falls.
Oh, nice.
So that's something to celebrate right there. But incredible place, and, you know, building the history and the quality of the industrial components into it is important. Great outreach, seven, seven award community meetings, 45 listening sessions, three interactive sessions, thousands of people on the opt-in surveys, we've gotten great input.
I know, it's been very impressive, very impressive.
Yeah, and just completely enthusiastic. I mean, we've heard lots of really creative ideas, but everybody just really wants it to happen, so that's, that's great. And lots of different formats that we took those meetings through. You're all from, very familiar with the site. There are some components of the, of the industrial heritage that are still there, and we're trying to celebrate those and incorporate those in the plan. The four core values that were mentioned, I believe you're all familiar with, those are the basis of the plan and the basis of the planning. Again, lots of really creative input from the public for each of them. History of the site can't be overstated, not only to the Native Americans, but to the early settlers, to the industrial components of Oregon, and to today's community. So it's, there's simply no more historic place in the state, and we want to really celebrate that, starting with its early days as a, first a community, or residential in downtown, and then into industrial site in its later years. We have identified key elements of that site that we think are very important. This is the inside of the number four paper machine prior to closure. This is what it looks like today. So we have a great opportunity with these large volumes to rethink what can happen in these buildings. And we have some historic foundations still remaining. We've identified four primary buildings that really fit within the system well and could be rehabilitated. There's many other structures that also could be incorporated, and we've identified those as well. And it's really going to be up to the individual developers to understand how best to build those into the new fabric of the, of the site. The site is still being used by Native Americans. This is the Lamprey Harvest, and there's been outreach to a number of the tribes, the Confederated, tribes of the Grand Ron have been invited out, and there's an ongoing dialogue with them about their message for the redeveloped site. We've looked at lots of examples of other successful places, and those have given us a lot of good cues about how to proceed.
I'm just kind of curious, so did we, we sent letters to a total of five tribes, I believe, and did we get responses from any other than the Grand Ron?
I believe there was from, you guys need to let me know, but I thought it was.
Sure, we've, we took the chair of the Yumatilla tribe out, and we had conversations with the chair of the Yakama. We're still working on the Warm Springs and the Selets.
Thank you.
Paramount to everyone's input has been public access, in every variety you can imagine. Pedestrian bicycles, boats, vehicles, different things to do on the site, that sort of thing. So we've really formulated the framework plan to focus on public access. The original Main Street of Oregon City is kind of an identifier of the site. It's gone through many iterations, but what we focused on for this plan is the original street grid of the city. You can see that in the lower left-hand side of the drawing. So Main Street, Fourth Third, and Water are part of the plan, reestablish those. They also develop very viable development blocks. So it not only is reestablishing the historic quality of the place, helps to maintain the historic structures, but it also is good economically for redevelopment. One of the big issues we have been wrestling with, and we continue to have open dialogue with ODOT on, is access. We believe there's a really good solution here, where we use primarily surface streets and new signalization to, to provide access to the, to the site, and including the opening of Water Street. And again, it's an ongoing conversation, but our traffic engineers are very confident that we have a good solution here that's reasonably affordable, and also meets a really specific criteria of connecting Main Street, not having a, only for vehicles, but having a pedestrian, a really simple pedestrian connection.
Could you go back there?
Sure. So what's that showing is the different turning movements. The big issue is the left turns into Main, and so there's ways of using your existing grid to allow that to occur.
We could put a roundabout right there.
There you go.
No left turns?
No left turns, it's all left turns. Problem solved.
Problem solved.
That's right, okay.
In a roundabout way.
It is, oh, okay. This is Water Street today, and our vision of it is extending the promenade with an esplanade into the site, and creating a vehicular way, you can see on the left, and bringing in all modes of transportation into the site. Another primary focus beyond the streets is the trail, and that's shown in orange, using elements of the riverbank for overlooks and historic interpretation, but really focusing on the primary goal of getting out to the falls. This is the riverbank today, and the way we envision it, some of those elements could be used as overlooks and other things, and you can see the promenade, or esplanade, I should say, up on the upper right. Some would be on structure, some would be on soil.
And the new trails would connect in with our other existing.
Absolutely, completely. Yes, thank you, absolutely, it's, the whole notion is to, is to connect throughout.
Don't those, could you go back one? Don't those stand-up pedal borders seem a little close to the falls?
Do it today.
And then the, the object of everyone's walk is going to be to get out to the falls, and the yellow area is part of the old industrial elements of the dam. We've worked with PGE, they're very excited about the partnership of allowing access out here, and really connecting to, to the heritage of Willamette Falls. This is the look of the walkway today in its industrial past. Actually, some of these pipes are now gone even, but the way it's been envisioned, it becomes a open promenade, esplanade, out to the water, views to both sides, and having a very welcoming kind of condition. View back into the lagoon today could be revitalized. We have learned that light watercraft could enter this space. There is safety concerns around the edge of the dam, but it would be wonderful to allow crafts in there and revitalize the buildings, or perhaps some of the buildings get removed and open space gets built, or maybe all of them. So either way, at the end of Main Street, we think it's really important that the lagoon is a focus for recreation and for enjoyment. Then looking further south, the Kanema Route, there's a spur line there that can, will connect people to this really wonderful edge of the river. That's how it looks today, and the view, the vision of it is to have a multi-use bike and pedestrian trail and build, or install native vegetation.
I stopped just a second, because we had, had comments on some of the meetings of having, if it were possible, and if in fact, the ODOT plans in terms of the rail system, rapid rail system would, both routes are Oregon City routes, but one of them, it would use the Union Pacific Line. Whether it'd be possible to have a station there. Can one be accommodated size-wise, do you think? A train station?
If it's just a train station, sure, you could accommodate it. Yeah, I mean, not on this specific stretch, but back into the site, you could, you could do that. No, there's plenty of room. It's a, the real issue will be the separation that the rail will require and all of that, because high speed is completely different than everything else, and that's going to be a bigger impact than the actual station itself. But I think it'd be wonderful if there's some way that could work to have this be the spot.
Station would be in the mill site, not at Kanema, right?
That's what I'm saying, right.
Mayor Neely, we plan on putting a, you know, positive support statement in our strategy document that just says that, you know, if the stars align, that, you know, accommodating high-speed rail in this location makes sense. So we kind of have an adopted document, we aren't really saying much other than.
Right, I can understand that, yeah.
So you will see something like that in a strategy document, to kind of just lay the seed if that happens.
And then, the place floods. So this is a 96 flood, these are folks up on Highway 99, so just an immense amount of water coming across the site, and we've looked at where that flood was, it's in blue, and the strategy is that those are the areas we're looking for development of primarily public open space, so not high-value buildings. Some of the historic structures and other elements could still be incorporated, but it would have to meet current flood standards. So that, that also provides, and Matt will talk about this in a minute, a great benefit to the site for redevelopment, because with a nice public open space, a trail and connect, visual connection to the water, that'll make the other parts of the site more valuable. This is a view down underneath, we call it the catacombs, just layers and layers of industry, and there's been lots of examples in the country and throughout the world about where these industrial sites have become interpretive sites. And Mill Ruins Park in Minneapolis is a great, successful kind of example of that. Also, in Sydney, Australia, taking a petroleum site and turning it into a public open space and leaving components of the site there for interpretation and enjoyment. Healthy habitat is very key to the plan also. The basic strategy is to, where we do have soil and riverbank, to remove invasive species and to plant native vegetation, to create roughening along the bottom of the bank. That's a term meant for places for fish to rest when they move up and downstream. So taking some of the industrial riprap out and other things, so that there, there are pockets and places, revitalizing the lagoon by allowing the flow to come through the lagoon again. Right now, it's stagnant. And then, looking at the rocky kind of habitat zones right up near the falls, because there's plants that grow there that grow nowhere else, and we want to make sure there's places for them. Then economic redevelopment, obviously, is a, is a very important aspect as well. Lots of input, lots of conversation about that. The basic strategy is within the block grid system, you can see the blocks in yellow, have a great capacity for redevelopment. Those closest to downtown are probably the easiest to start with, because they're closest to streets and utilities and that sort of thing, and they're actually on, on soil. But those are the blocks that we think have the greatest potential, and that's about the, that's an overlay, if you just took those blocks just for scale, what, how much land it would take in downtown. The other blocks that are in the flooded, flood-prone areas could have some redevelopment, but they also, we think, have, lend themselves well to open space development. We've looked at the existing site and size of the buildings, they're great scale for redevelopment as far as big volumes with lots of potential flexibility. There are challenges for structure, because they weren't structured for today's seismic codes. But thinking about how things would redevelop, parking would likely be in structures above grade, because of the basalt kind of quality of the, of the site, it's hard to dig down, expensive. You can see how they might be incorporated in the, in the buildings. There's also been a conversation of perhaps a shared parking structure that could help downtown as well as the site, so that's also available to us. And this is the plan, after it's all been said and done. So we're, we're proceeding with a framework plan that provides lots of flexibility, but it also provides certainty. So the certainty has to do with circulation and the routing of the streets and people, where the development blocks are, the basic character of those, and gives flexibility to a developer, a variety of developers, to work within the economy of the site, to build it. We went ahead and developed some demonstration plans to just show people what that might look like. This is one way of doing it, where the blocks near the, near the dam are, many of the buildings are taken out and open spaces built. The routing of the, of the main circulation along the water and into the falls would be like this. And the open space in this scenario could be quite naturalistic along the bank, but still provide, oops, still provide a public open space for gatherings and events and enjoyment.
And there was talk to you that in that plan, it would help the water flow?
Yes, so the water flow through the lagoon, we'd like to, right, the plant has had a water right to take water directly into the plant for process. Those penetrations are still there, and it'd be great to be able to allow water to circulate through and into those, into that area that you see on the, on the right-hand side there, and establish some flow back into those tail races. Another way to do it, saving more of the industrial kind of quality along the river's edge, you can see that the trail could be on top, for example, of this, this kind of structure, but still a lot of nice open space directly connected to the water. Or even another way of, of looking at the variety of open spaces where the, the site could be sloped down towards the water, and again, the edge is restored, those flows restored in the, in the tail race. Lots of good examples in the country and close by of how this has been done successfully. And our vision is, this is Main Street today with one of the historic buildings that in, in the, in the future could be a really vital place. Main Street could be revitalized, new pedestrian ways, new places for people to be. So as, as we said, the economics of the, the whole plan is a big topic we've been discussing, and I'd like to turn it over to Matt, okay?
Okay, thank you, Matt Brown with Locai. And I am, along with Eco Northwest, we're providing a lot of the advice and hopefully strategic direction on how you get from a plan on paper to something that is actually concrete action, that we can go and see and visit and feel and touch. I want to highlight, kind of as an organizing element for what I'm going to discuss, these three key words, and I'm actually going to throw a fourth at you and make you remember that as we go along as well. But transformative action, contingent relationships, and patience. The fourth word I think I would add is momentum, and we'll talk a little bit more about that later as we go through this. Let's talk a little bit about the current perception of the site and kind of what we understand about the site today. We all, I think, are aware of it. It's a constrained industrial site. As I was talking to another developer, he said it's got a lot of hair on it, you know? I mean, it's just really, it's a very tough site, right, to kind of get your arms around. Its location in Oregon City, you know, as a submarket, and we think we provided a summary of the market report early in the process, kind of highlights the idea of, you know, if you look at just current market rates for industrial, or retail, or commercial uses in the city, they don't necessarily support kind of the cost of building a new mixed-use, more urban-scale model like is being conceived here. So, you know, that's, that's another hurdle that we're looking at. The zoning on the, on the property is a current hurdle of industrial zoning as compared to mixed-use. And the, the issue is that if we remain in that kind of perception of the site, right, there's really not a lot of hope. So how do we kind of get out of that, right, and begin to think not so much about this narrow view of the site, but really taking a much broader view of the site? And thinking about this, it's not just a site in Oregon City, it's a site on the Willamette River, on the Willamette Falls. It's a major, a significant resource, not just in this part of the metro region, but you could argue statewide or in the, in the Pacific Northwest. Remember that we're just a two-minute drive from West Lynn, right? So we can look at Oregon City demographics, but why aren't we also looking at West Lynn demographics that are just a two-minute drive away? So, you know, I think, again, we have to expand our thinking in terms of where is this site and what are really the opportunities here? So that whole notion of transformative action, how do we get, how do we take the right kinds of actions that transform not just the way, you know, visitors to the site think and feel about it, but also how the market reacts to it? And this is not a branding exercise, right? I mean, we're not just talking about, you know, a nice logo and, you know, some nice words to talk about. We're talking about actions that actually transform the site into something else, and that people get to experience that transformation as well. So if our challenge is to get from the current condition of the site as you see it today to what Mike just showed you, which I think is, is pretty compelling in terms of both a mix of new and adaptive reuse and creating a great place for people, we would argue that that starts, that transformative action starts with thinking about how you create public access along the river and out to the falls, and how do you create great places for people in this area? So transforming the site, I think, really starts with a discussion about how you invite the public into it and how they begin to experience it. So what we've begun to think about is structuring this along a type of, we'll call it a continuum. And it goes on the left from public benefit to the right, private investment. So maybe greater public benefit on the right, and more private action is on the, or public benefit on the left, and more private action is on the right. And you might also think about it as a timeline, that the more immediate actions are on the left, and the actions that are maybe going to require more patience or more time to come about are on the right. So we broke that up into these four categories. Public access on the left, open space amenities, public infrastructure, and then private development. So I'll just walk you through each one of these for a second. So public access, Mike did a good job of kind of walking you through what that means. So it's to and along the river, through the site, and out to the falls. So creating that continuous experience for the public along the riverfront and out to the falls, and giving them a chance to access all of that. Open space amenities is about really some of the place-making that can happen on the site. So creating places for people, creating a focus for the site, providing chances to interpret the site and create that really great sense of place that's tied to the history and culture of it. Key thing is integrating this with both existing buildings as well as future buildings on the site. So I'll come back to that in a little bit as well, and then also activating these, these places. The public infrastructure piece of this is kind of the next step on the continuum. So what are those necessary infrastructure elements that are required not only to support, you know, in some cases, some of this infrastructure will support some of those first two things, the access and the open space, but there are also some things that are required to support future private investment. So utilities and site access and public parking, you know, that even just the basics of preparing the site for development become an important element in getting some of this work off the ground. And then, the private development, of course, the, the new buildings, the adaptive reuse, and new mix of uses on the site, private parking to support a lot of that, is kind of at the end of the continuum, and is, is, I think, in a way, an end product of being able to put those first three pieces together. So those are the four elements that we think about, and I guess where the continuum comes in is how we begin to approach our actions for each one of these. for each one of these. So I would suggest that for public access, I think it's absolutely critical to fund and build that now. So we're not going to be actually able to transform the way people think about the site if we don't actually invite them onto it and let them experience it. And I think we've all, everyone that's been down there on the site to tour people around it, right, I mean, everyone has that same kind of visceral reaction like, oh, you know, I didn't even, I had no idea, right? And part of it, I have no idea is some of the condition of the site, but part of the, you know, the major part of that is, I cannot believe that, you know, the power of these falls and that you could actually get right out there to them and experience that. So being able to provide that opportunity early on, I think, is important. Open space amenities, I think it's important that those are, there's a strong commitment now to the funding that's required to implement those. But it's going to require, I think, more coordination with the private sector. So what Mike showed you in the framework plan, there are some buildings within some of those open space areas. We don't know how a future developer may plan on incorporating those. And I think it's important to kind of coordinate how those are integrated with the open space and kind of, the three demonstration plans, I think, suggest that there's obviously options for how to successfully integrate those buildings into the site, into the public open space. Along with that, the public infrastructure is like the open space, I think, something that requires a commitment now, but it's a contingent action. What I mean by that is that you secure the funding now and secure the commitments for that now, but you don't spend that money until it's really required. And it's required when the private development is actually ready and they're here saying, we're ready to move, here's our letters from our lender that say that they're ready to fund this. Can, are you ready now to do your part and let's work together to build? So, you know, these last two, in a way, are very closely tied together in terms of, you know, contingent action. I will say this, I am not a believer in if you build it, they will come. So this is a little, you know, this strategy is a little bit of a departure for me because I think there's a suggestion here that there really is some public action that's needed and required before the private sector is going to be able to step up to the plate here. But there is still that element of, you know, you never want to get too far out over your skis on some of these things, and you want to make sure the private sector is there before you make certain investments in the site. So to summarize, I want to kind of highlight three, I think, key things, and I'll start at the bottom. This is where the patience key word comes in. So given the condition of the site today and kind of understanding what we've been through with the two property or two potential owners, right, that have kind of looked at the site and walked away from it, I think everyone is hitting up against the same thing. This is a long process from a private investor's standpoint. Every dollar that gets invested may take seven, 10 years more before they see that returned. And so without, you know, we've taken a lot of great steps, and I think getting the zoning in place is going to be one big barrier that's removed on the site. But until there are some stronger commitments in terms of being able to address some of the open space access and infrastructure issues on the site, I think it's going to be hard for people to get over that hurdle. And it still will be a long process even with those pieces in place, right? So I think patience is important from the public standpoint, that you understand what the kind of timeframe that the private developer may be on before they actually can, you know, see the rewards of an investment in the site. And I think, leading to that then, in order to set the stage, you know, I think from the outset, we've talked about how important public-private partnerships are going to be on this project. But actually, almost more importantly, it's the public-public partnerships on this that you have with your partners at the table that are going to be, I think, one of the keys to unlocking this site. Do we have slides after this as well?
There's a-
The funding slides?
I think the planning slides.
Okay. So, you know, I think the importance when, your city manager at the start talked about the importance of these partnerships and keeping these people engaged. And so I would also impress on you that you're the local jurisdiction that is kind of in charge of the site. If you're in charge of the land use process, it's within your city boundaries, it's an important part of your city. And I think your leadership and your role in leading that partners group, I think, is going to be absolutely critical in securing those commitments. So there's a great opportunity. They're all at the table right now. They're engaged, they're interested, but getting them interested beyond, you know, this process, I think, is going to be absolutely critical. So, and then from that, I think you can develop some strong public-private partnerships that lead to, that lead to real investment in the site. I want to talk about one other element as it relates to patience. The, we spent a lot of time on this project, I think, talking about economic development. And I can understand because it's one of the more difficult elements kind of in this process to figure out. There's not a lot of certainty about what can or should happen on the site or how it's going to come about. And we're trying to lay out a strategy that gets us there. So I want to make sure that we always remember that there are four core values, right, to this site. And I would hate for us to get so hung up on the economic development side that we forget that we have opportunities in front of us to move some of the other core values forward. And I think part of the idea of the continuum is to give ourselves an opportunity to evaluate some of those opportunities as they arise and then decide whether they're worth moving forward with. Because you're not just investing in public access and public parks because you hope that someday there might be development there. There's a real public benefit and public purpose in doing those beyond leveraging, you know, economic development on the site that could, you know, legitimately get your support for moving those things forward. So with that, I think Mike has some wrap-ups just on the-
Yeah, just the process-
Process, and then we can start discussing.
Okay. So as you, many of you have participated in the, you know, developing the vision, we are now also working diligently on the, on the land use submittal. And it's on schedule. We're on schedule to be in front of the planning commission in April, as agreed to. And it's been a really interesting conversation of taking your current zoning information and approaches and building this new structure, but we think it's going to be very successful to meet the objectives that we've all set out for ourselves. So we're very excited about that, and we're looking for a kind of a final approval this summer. In that land use application, we're really focused on that framework plan and the key elements of the block development, circulation, open space, kind of the big, the big moves, and then the compliance with the code. We're also doing a vision document, and that is a standalone document that really incorporates all that, all the good thinking that has gone into it so that we have a very clear land use application, new framework, new zoning, but another document that really talks about the goodness of this place. And that vision strategy report will include, you know, the aspirational vision, obviously, but the market information that Matt and Echo are working on, phasing strategies, successful examples and that sort of thing. Because as we and future groups take this on, we think it's very important that that is clearly stated and so they understand what that vision is. So it'll be two documents that we're putting together. So with that-
Can I move on a little bit?
Please.
Right, a little update. We met in front of the planning commission last night and provided them a little additional update. We're looking at the April 21st, first planning commission hearing. That will be dedicated just to this project. We have, our one night only with this project, because, you know, we have a lot of land use applications this spring. But, you know, we'll start out, and our goal is to try to, you know, have about four planning commission hearings for this and about four city commissions, knowing that it may be more or less. But that's kind of how we're laying out the process. We'll come back to you two more times at a work session level. By the next time we see you, we'll have our recommended code changes. So we'll have actual planning commission, uh, city commission work session where you'll look at some of our recommended changes to our municipal code. And then the second work session, I think, we'll dive into the strategy report. I'd like to do a little clarification. People have been a little confused why we've separated this out. And I think the unique nature of this partnership and knowing that we have a very wonky land use application, that we don't want to put kind of these other inspirational or ethereal or economic development into a, really just a zone change and a master plan to get this framework. So a way to think of it is, the master plan and the rezone is to do what we need to do to rezone the property and provide certainty to the developer when they come into a land use action. The strategy document, it will be hopefully acknowledged by all four partners in some way, will hopefully be adopted by resolution or ordinance. And it really is, in a sense, the future lobbying document. Most of the public, when they want to learn about the document, will hand them this beautiful 40 to 80-page document, which, you know, has all the inspiration in the background and the economic strategy and our, and that's what the public's going to see. Very few people are going to open up this really tall, thick, you know, wonky land use applications with 24 pages of traffic information by our subconsultants. They're going to want to read the secondary document. One of, Kevin Johnson with GV Architects had a nice way of talking about it. He says it's a combination of People Magazine and The New Yorker. There's the strategy document. I really liked that. It's just big, beautiful pictures, but with a lot of meat, too. And that's what we are going to be using a lot through our lobbying, both at the state, local, and federal level. So that's kind of what you'll see. So when you have your hearings this summer, we'll do a zone change, master plan, traditional land use application. And right afterwards, we'll have another report on the agenda will be the strategy document. So each night, you'll be tracking both of these documents, but they'll be adopted separately and they have separate purposes. That's my update.
You may carry on its chair if you want, Betty.
Pardon me, I'm sorry.
You may carry on its chair if you want.
Oh, no.
Well, that means I gotta wait for everybody else to speak. So on the floor, who wants to start off first?
Well, I think this is a very, I'm looking at the document of the meetings, the dates that was provided. It's very aggressive, and I appreciate all the work that you guys have done. Do we still have people on the site itself working? Are this, that company that was doing-
NRI Global is now off the site, and it is, this trustee has security and maintenance staff on the site now.
Okay. So that's all that's on the staff. Okay.
Until what date?
We have with our collaborative planning agreement we signed last year, the trustee has promised that he would not move forward for any abandonment of the property before April of 2014. So we are coming very close to that date.
Yes. We'll have to discuss what's going to happen then.
So what's Plan B?
Haven't finished Plan A.
I'm moving on to Plan B.
Well, I think there's a couple of options. Potentially, you know, a new buyer could come forward. Maybe, you know, I've seen the article, we have received a couple of calls from folks. Most likely, and obviously this is up to Peter McKittrick, the bankruptcy trustee, he could move to an auction of the site. If an auction decides not to do an auction or auction is not successful, you know, he could move to an abandonment position. Sempra would be the first lien holder who would have right to the property to foreclose. Oregon Department of Energy has a lien on the front office building. So if Sempra does not foreclose, essentially, you could potentially move into a situation where Clackamas County could come in for back taxes and take the property through that process. I believe, off the top of my head, I think it's a three-year back taxes, no payment before they could begin that process. So quite a bit of uncertainty as to how this could play out over the next couple of months. I think it's important, though, I think this is where the partnership really does come in. If you do get into a situation where there is an abandonment type of situation, you know, how do we, how do we move forward with that? There are, you know, from what we've seen from the court documents, the carrying costs are anywhere between 32 and 40,000 a month. You know, probably some of that could be reduced, but it is still a big liability per year. You know, making sure the site is safe, you know, you're going to have vandalism, you're going to have theft, you're going to have squat, you know, all those potentials out there that would need to be addressed before it becomes a complete public nuisance.
Is there an attempt for you to make this study session presentation to every one of the partners?
Yes.
We've already met with Metro.
Yeah, we've already made the presentation to Metro last week. We're going to meet with Clackamas County. I'm not sure what the state, when the state meeting is, but-
We had one of the members of the partnership, as you will recall, the first time that that person was at a meeting, made the statement, well, I don't care about those other three. I'm just concerned about economic development. We, well, as discussion progressed, I think that person could see how these other things tied together were important. I think you're going to see probably some concern in terms of the other partners about the strategy you're putting forward. I don't have that much of a problem with it because I think what will happen if we can find, I mean, there's going to have tremendous public investment to get the, to get the public access in place. And I guess that's the major concern, and you're mentioning a top priority, lobbying for that. But there'll be an economic development for Main Street as a whole. I mean, there'll be a tremendous benefit in any case. But of course, we do want to see economic development holding at the site, too. So the way you've, the way you've structured this and doesn't bother me very much. But I'm not, I am a bit concerned about pulling the other partners with us from that concept. And I think it's critical to get all the partners together if we're going to find that public funding. Because the city can't provide it, the county can't provide it, the, we're providing some already, Metro can't provide it. It may be able to do something on the open space funding that it has, but it's going to take more than that, I would think. And it's so critical that all the partners can agree to this particular vision if we're going to get it going. And that's, I guess that's a concern of mine.
Mayor, it's not just the partners we know of that we have identified, the four of us that have been working together.
Yeah.
I think the level of funding we're looking at and the regional impact of it probably will require us to bring our friends along from Washington County and other places that have been on some of the tours and some more outreach to them as well.
And I think that's where it's important. That's why, you know, we may, you know, what we're really looking for is making sure that we're on the right track with you. Because really, you need to speak as one unified voice in order to bring those other partners along and bring them into speaking with one unified voice. And so, like I said, if there are questions or concerns or, you know, we just want to make sure that what you're seeing tonight, that we're on the right track, that you understand why we're doing it, or understand where we're heading with this so that you are comfortable and will be able to, in potentially short order, need to be speaking as one voice on this.
Just, I mean, I think I made the point during the presentation, but I'll just reinforce it again here. I mean, I think, you know, it's absolutely imperative, I think, that Oregon City be seen in a leadership position on this with the other partners. Because of your standing, it is your city and it is your site, you know. So that is, that's absolutely critical. I think the other, the other piece of that is, you know, there are ways to be a partner without necessarily having to write, you know, a big check. And, you know, there are very important things that a city can do that don't necessarily involve, you know, money. And so, you know, I think part of our strategy document is going to be to try to highlight some of those things that can be of great assistance, not just to a private developer, maybe to some of the other partners, you know, in this process. You know, very common strategy for us is when you're looking at big numbers, just to try to make them, you know, in a bunch of small numbers that, you know, added together get you where you need to be. And so I also wouldn't short sell yourself in terms of what you can bring to the table. I mean, I think it's always important to the other partners, okay, what's Oregon City doing? Well, we're doing everything we can, right? But that doesn't mean you have to be on equal footing. It's just, you know, everyone has to be pulling their weight, you know, according to what they can, so.
Mr. Ross?
Early on, Tony, you said something about we're entering into a phase where we're going to be making quick decisions, and you're anticipating that. What other decisions are you anticipating being- What other decisions are you anticipating being made as quick decisions or fast-moving things that we're going to have to decide on?
Well, I think that, you know, I think that one of the reasons that we were able to get to where we are today so quickly and so successfully was that... And I'll say this again, everyone spoke with one voice, one theme. Everybody was on board. April twenty... Within two months, something is going to happen, most likely. I mean, a very high likelihood that something is going to change on that site. And we need to be able to bring all of our partners together, because it, you know, there's multiple ways that this could go. And with that drastic change in direction, not being able to work with the trustee anymore potentially, and into this unknown, is really going to take leadership and outreach and good, solid, consistent communication to show that we are still solid and moving in the direction that we want to, even though that there are all these other things going around us that we cannot control. So, those type of decisions, whether it be communicating with the other partners, you know, really taking the lead and showing the leadership and that we're together on this as Oregon City and what we're trying to achieve, and really taking on that lead role. And, you know, not that it's right or wrong, as we've gone through this process, remember when it started, when it went bankrupt, we were in the due diligence of potentially driving of purchasing the property. Metro had the expertise on the due diligence and the property acquisition. We kind of took, even though as on the face, we were all together, you know, they had the expertise, and they took a lot of that role. We transferred into the public partnership, into the public participation, the land use. Oregon City really took that role. And we're really trying to figure out now what that next step is. And we really think that it's got to start with us, taking that leadership role and kind of getting out in front of this and letting everybody get comfortable to get in behind us, knowing that we are leading, that we're... And we're fully behind this to as much as we can be, so that they are comfortable making what are probably going to be some significant public investments.
Okay.
I might dovetail on that with a little bit... Try to put a little bit more explanation behind that. This commission has always, in my view anyway, been pretty solid about the four values and your support of it, and you've been strong advocates throughout the community. Even when it required expenditure of public dollars, you've been very solid in your commitment. What we have found is that sometimes our partners, they're made up of governing bodies that also have diversity on there. And some of them, for example, may not agree that certain kinds of funding strategies should be applicable to the site. They may be some disagreement on those boards, and what we're going to be trying to do is set an example of unity in our own... The way we react, and then trying to use that positive consensus that you have to try to inspire that same consensus among those other groups. Because the price tag proportionately is going to be high for Oregon City, but it's going to be a lower numerical figure, because compared to some of the other partners, we have drastically smaller assets. And so, these are going to be where the tough decisions get made, and where we, as staff, expect there to be perhaps some strong differences of opinion. And we want to try to make sure that that doesn't fragment somehow the support we have from our partners among themselves and for us and the project.
Another question is, what do you anticipate the partnership will look like if the property is seized by the county?
You mean defaults to the county? I don't think...
Well, eventually.
Yeah. Well, as Tony mentioned, the holding costs on the property are pretty significant, so I don't really... I haven't talked to the county myself about directly, not lately, anyway. We talked to them early on, because somebody said, "Well, why don't the partners buy it?" And then, when we found out what the holding costs were, everybody kind of took a step back. So, you know, there is an auction process that will precede that. The trustee will probably, if... You mentioned, what is Plan B? I think the trustee's been pretty candid with us that he doesn't have a Plan B. Maybe we'll just say he doesn't have a plan that he's calling B, because if Plan A isn't going to work out the way it appears it isn't, he's probably either going to have to have another buyer by the end of April, or there's going to likely be an auction. And then, there could be another buyer come forward, or the same buyer with a different offer, you know. So, it's a very fluid situation, isn't it?
Yeah. And we've had initial discussions about that potential of the county foreclosure, you know. And so, you know, we are actually meeting next week, county, metro, you know, to start talking about these scenarios and how do we address those? What is Plan B and C?
And we haven't talked to you... It's been quite a while since we really checked in with the senior staff at the county about that likelihood. You know, we had conversations with their senior staff a year ago, but they've had some big staffing changes up there in the last twelve months. Principally, my counterpart up there, this county administrator, I want to make sure he's comfortable and that, you know, that we... I know where he stands, and he knows where we stand and that sort of thing. And we're going to be brainstorming what the different strategies could be. Metro and our staff have already, and as well as our consultants, have already identified and looked lots of places where we might find funding. We have some preliminary ideas, how much the public access piece, for example, is going to cost. I don't want to talk about that tonight, because it's still in development, but it's tens of millions of dollars. It's a big commitment. And so, we're going to be strategizing with those partners to find out, how much unity do you think there is for this kind of approach, or this kind of approach? And we're going to be talking more to them, too, about the price tag. And I think as we get that information from them, we will keep you informed. And if we can get as much consensus as possible among the staff, at the staff level, we think that's going to help a little bit with some of the conversations you may have with the elected leaders from the partnership.
I'd like to give just a little overview, again, on, you know, the absolute value of this master plan and rezone this summer is, we got in front of the vision, and we created the vision. And we'll be memorializing that through master plan, site design review, and policies that any future development, even a future open space, or a future, you know, private developer will need to meet through our planning commission. So, in some sense, you know, what happens if there's an auction person and they don't have the same vision? We're ahead of that vision. That's really, really powerful. So, you know, keeping this land use process going and kind of making it sure that it's adopted this summer is really, really valuable, to making sure that whomever moves forward to develop on that site, they are consistent with our plan, which is built in a lot of flexibility along with that vision.
Certainty with flexibility, wasn't that your phrase?
Certainty with flexibility. Can't say it enough.
Yeah. And I can't go back to what Matt said a little bit earlier, when we were looking at that spectrum of public investment, private investment, and what happens along that way. And this is really something for you to think about, when, you know, we talk about this initial public investment, and it's significant. But really, the crux of the matter is that you don't... We don't have the property value to support the type of development that we want to see there. And so, you know, you really only have a couple of options to either try and change that. You know, public investment is a way to do that. Wait it out, you know. A lot of patience needed for that, and you're still going to have to make that public investment at some point, or accept something less. And I think we've consistently heard and shown that there is a desire for this amazing place and taking this opportunity. And I would argue, I agree with Matt, you can't always just build it and they will come, you know. But you need to really... I personally really think that, you know, this opportunity for this public access along the Willamette River to the Willamette Falls, in and of itself, stands alone, worthy of investment. And that's something you need to think about and make that decision, if that's something you think as well. And if not, you know, that's something we need to talk about, because that really does affect the way we're approaching how we move forward on this property. So, scared you all enough?
Yeah, I am.
Sorry. We'll light it up a little.
I'm frankly not very terribly concerned about this commission. I mean, I think we've been on board all the way through. And the public access to us, all of us, has been a major feature of the four. I know they're equal values and so forth. But the thing that made it attractive to us was, in fact, it getting open to the public. And so, I don't think... I don't think you've got a divided commission at all here on that regard. It's a case of pushing forward and convincing everybody else that our vision is the one. And it's very difficult to, really, I think, this point, visualize what another vision would be. I don't know what it would be.
Lot of things on my mind. I think that the points... I think the point that the mayor brought up in terms of economic development and the concern that maybe some of our partners won't come quite... Won't come farther with us if we kind of approach it this way. I don't... I mean, I would have that concern a little bit as well, but I think if we focus on a couple of key things, one of which is, I think this continuum of action, I think, is really a good view. I think it is really great. And I think we have two things happening kind of parallel with each other that we've talked about a little bit, and I want to get some more feedback from staff to see kind of where this... These two things are at in comparison with each other. That's the Heritage Area Coalition. The Heritage Area Coalition, I think, could very much be at a position where our view in terms of going forward on this continuum of action parallels with what they're doing. And in the concern that the mayor has, the Heritage Area Coalition is looking at the Willamette Falls area as a whole, which includes Westland, which includes Lake Oswego, which goes exactly to the point where we were making comparisons with Oregon City market versus Westland, Lake Oswego. So, I think what the Heritage Area Coalition is doing, you know, they're building partners that are not just Oregon City, but our county, metro, you know, federally, federal level, but also our other, you know, more... How do I say this? You know, those other cities that, you know, are more of...
Terrible.
I mean, the Westland, Lake Oswego, I think with their partnership already in the Willamette Heritage Area Coalition, I think could really help move forward in some of the concerns that we have with the legacy project. So, I think at some point, where do these two parallels come together to then kick us off to this next step? Because I think that's really... I think that combined effort could really help these other partners come along with us. I think that's the key to going to the next step, both for the legacy project, but also for the Heritage Area. I mean, when you combine those things together, I don't know who in their right mind wouldn't want to continue along with it. I mean, it's getting so big and with those, you know...
Momentum.
So, where... I mean, how much have we paralleled with what we're doing with Willamette Falls Heritage Area Coalition? And do you know to what degree? I know they're pretty far along in their process, but I don't think... I haven't heard an update for a while. And then, so what's our view on how maybe that... Those two groups could move forward?
Sure. We've always, through this whole process, this year, been in close coordination with Alice Morris and the group, and, you know, we've made presentations, and we have reviewed their strategy doc... I mean, their submission document for the Heritage Area nationally. Right now, you know, it's almost... I think of it as, you know, they're creating this larger heritage area, and we are a project in this area. So, we're moving along this parallel way of a project, and you're right, where we combine is through lobbying.
Right.
Where we combine is through communication. And so, you know, I don't have that specific answer, but we are working together, big picture. So, when it makes sense that, you know, at this point, it makes sense for us to have this common voice, that absolutely is always intended.
Right.
I think right now, we're still kind of moving along our little parallel paths, and we don't intersect each other in a sense that everything that we're doing complements each other.
Right.
So, it's really almost of when opportunity calls and it makes sense, we can come together. But we can still kind of continue on in our parallel, because everything we're doing is compatible.
So, I guess I'm just wondering if coming together might not be a good idea, and if at what so... If so, at what point?
Right.
And it might not be in everything that we're doing, but there could be definitely some key components moving forward that I think those groups could come together with and have much more power.
And in one way is that there's some private grants that are going to require a nonprofit.
Right.
They're a perfect nonprofit for some. There's also some natural areas nonprofits that may be a better help for other ones. So, that's exactly one.
Okay.
You know, with that larger lobby, I think more of it's... What they're doing is... We'll always exist as two different entities, because our whole purpose is different.
Right.
But it's always, how do we know when our... At what time when things align? How do we act together in a way that's supportive?
And it also is going to strengthen our lobbying effort and our lobbying document. They complement one another. So, our project would complement their grant applications and awards that they would be pursuing, and their formation complements our efforts as well, because it does give it more of a regional...
Absolutely.
You know, it raises boundaries that traditionally have been there.
Well, Commissioner Polly and I think I see that Mr. Underwood wants to speak, too, but I have her on the list. Caroline, go ahead.
Yeah, I just wanted to give a little insight about what I've observed at the partner meetings. The partnership between all the partners, as far as being on the same page and being very supportive of the project and wanting to reach out to other partners as well, I think has been amazing. The ball has been rolling very quickly. A lot has been taking place, and now I see, you know, Oregon City really is becoming the trunk of the tree, and then all the partners are like the branches, you know. So, they can take in the chlorophyll and, you know, and get the other...
Or other green things.
Yeah. Get the fuel. Help get this fuel, the partners. Because everybody has something different to bring to the situation. And when we were going through the funding strategy and talking about that, all the different... So many of them, dozens of different types of funding sources. Every partner had a different opportunity to work with those funding sources. People had specialties. And so, it's like, what are you good at? What do you have access to that you can pursue this and look into this? And so, we're all going to kind of, you know, we can split up and delegate and work together. So, we're not alone in this at all, and I think that's really important to remember. We do... We are the backbone. I think we have to be very strong and solid together moving forward. There was also a lot of consensus, there always has been, about public access. And, you know, using, we do have money right now already, and hopefully, more will come, but getting people out to the site, removing that barrier, removing the gate, getting ownership of the property and really, public support and buy-in, getting people out there so that you can see the lay of the land and get a vision of it, and that public or private investment would come after that. But there's a lot of support with that, and so, I think the partners can be very effective in that after we go through the funding strategy and figure out what we can... What each of us can tap into and really go deep into that. So, I think there is clear direction. I do feel there's clear direction. I mean, it is moving quickly, and especially with the April coming up with the trustee. We do need to really be moving and thinking of that.
Eric.
I just wanted to add to Christina's comments. I sit on the board for the Willamette Falls Heritage Area Coalition. I represent the city there. And I just think that, you know, there's a real opportunity to partner with that group, given the public access. to partner with that group, given the public access piece that's coming up.
Yeah.
You know, one of their charges is to, as they become a heritage area, is to act like a heritage area. A major component of that is telling the story, and the way you tell the story is you get people out there to experience it. And so that's, that's their primary goal right now, and they're seeking state heritage designation first before they can go on to national. So I think they'd be all about working with our group here with the public access piece. I think it's huge.
Actually, even to respond, you know, we're looking at, even next year, how do we get increased public site tours, more than just Tony Knight and site tours, which is good this year, but, you know, we need to move on. Though, we've had some preliminary discussions with them, but they're a great group that would be a natural fit to enhance and to have more docents and more volunteer support. So, you know, looking at little small things they can do, that is exactly what we may need, we'll need to work on next year when we increase our public engagement in relation to getting more people physically out on more public site tours.
The, I think the partnership needs to be a broad one, like you mentioned, in any interest group. We do have the Lamont Falls part, what is the group, the Locks people?
Okay, hold on a second.
That's all right. We know, we know what we're talking about. And you can, and you can come up with a name. And they're tied to the polls, so I mean, the Locks are tied to the polls. It's got to be one of these sides that really lifts a lot of boats, but they're boats that are part of a common fleet. And, and so I think, I think we need to, even if it's on an individual basis on our part, if we identify partners that we want to bring forward to the table, we can mention who they are and we can pursue those. But we want to make sure that we're on the same message and the same direction when we do that pursuit. But it's, it's something I'm looking forward, you know, you, I get nervous when I hear the tens of millions of dollars, and all I can think about is the Columbia River Crossing. We've got to make sure that...
That's hundreds.
I understand that, I understand that. But the point is, there's going to be, there's going to be an investment planning this, and we've got to make sure that all the partners are behind that. We can't see the kind of thing that transpired there at the Columbia River Crossing. And so the goal's got to be well-defined, and it's something that everybody's going to be able to buy into and continue to proceed on.
Yes.
Got us here. Anything's on the table?
No.
So I think what I've heard, what I'm taking away from this is that it's, based on what you've seen, you're comfortable with the framework plan, and, you know, we'll obviously bring back more detail on the code part, the code amendments, how that's going to work. The strategic plan, you know, we've kind of laid out what our thought process is on why this is what we've come up with right now and the one that we're pursuing. And I think I'm hearing quite a bit of consensus that, you know, from Oregon City's standpoint, you know, this is something that we could get behind in terms of talking about, you know, the, the need for the public investment and the importance of that public access component, not only for the public benefit, but to help with the future private investment in the property. And we can build on that, I think, when we start talking with the other partners and how, you know, we can take on some of that leadership role. And I think I'm hearing I can comfortably start formulating a plan around that.
I guess another way of putting it is, regardless of whether there's a Langley or a different developer at the table on a given day, or regardless of what happens with an auction or with the trustee, is this commission comfortable saying, we still need to pursue public access, and the sooner the better?
Yes.
Regardless of the fact that it's a public commitment first?
And I want to make the point from the last partners meeting we had before Langley pulled out, the notion of the public access, the first thing moving forward was put forward then, even before we knew we were losing the investors. So that really hasn't changed.
Okay, that's one, that's a big issue for us, because we're going to be conveying that to our partner staff from you.
I just would say that, and we all know this, but the reason that all of these partners should be 100% on board with having the public get access to this site is it's the only way we can tell the story of the history of all these partners. I mean, we have not ever been able to tell the full story of the Confederated Tribes' history, the city's history, the county's history, the state's history. It's all there.
PGE.
And so if there's, in PGE, I mean, so, you know, I can't think of anything more powerful for these groups to want to continue on, even more so than economic development, I think, in terms of this beginning piece, because this is all of their story. And so I think if we really convey that, I think it would be odd for no one to want to continue to push forward just on that argument alone.
Well, you've got the foundation too, because all of the partners did agree to the four values.
Right.
The little different twist here is that while we've been always talking about these values of always having equal weight and not being necessarily in any particular order, now we're saying there is one that's in a particular order, and this is the one that we think it is. And I don't think anybody's going to be surprised by that. So we just wanted to make sure that that's how you felt. We thought it was going to be how you felt, that we wanted to make sure.
Because you have to have that next step.
It's got to be done, no matter, no matter what happens down there. The story has to be told, and it builds, I think, a great deal of value for the likelihood of the highest possible return on jobs and investment. And all the partners benefit from that too.
And it can help secure that site too and make it safe.
Absolutely.
I would, I would add that I think that public access piece actually embodies all four values. I mean, and there's no reason it can't be designed and implemented in that way, and I think the mayor made a point about, you know, bringing people down to downtown Oregon City is a good economic development activity, right? I mean, it's, you know, and hopefully if that results in more activity on Main Street and some, you know, new businesses going in and everything else, I mean, that's part of kind of the goal of this, of this process, you know? Getting people across 99E, as we've been talking about from the beginning, is absolutely critical, right? So that'll be part of it.
Thank you.
Anything else?
I think you've got the strong support you need.
No, I do, I do appreciate it, because I think we've gotten to, you know, one of those check-in points where we've come a long way in staff and the consultants and have pushed, and it's, it's one of those critical decision times where, you know, we need to make that decision, make sure that we have the support before we go out and, and come up with the next big step, which, which really, you know, there's going to be a lot more specifics, there's going to be a lot of discussion, and there's, you know, you're talking real money at that point.
This is, you know, number one priority for us, so we need to make sure, it's a number one priority for all of our partners. I mean, they have lots of, you know, we all have projects that we're all balancing, and, you know, what can we do to make sure that this stays at a high priority of all the, all the partners?
And you may have noticed that almost all of the photographs that you have, there's a blue heron somewhere. I don't know what kind of bird that is up there on the top of that screen, but...
This is one of our new photographs, Mark Gamba, who did the original. You would have seen this at the meeting, at the big celebration on the 6th, and actually we have three that Metro purchased and framed and will be giving away as raffles at the next meeting. So here's a little...
Wait a minute, you're not giving away as raffles?
I mean...
You're raffling a lot!
Raffling to give away. But there's some nice store prizes for people who attend the March 6th event.
Oh, great.
And thanks, Mike, to you and the team. Great job again.
Thank you.
Thank you guys.
Really great.
Thanks. Thank you. With that, I'm going to go to the city manager's report.
Thank you, Mayor. I think, first I want to ask John Lewis to give us an update on TRIMET appearing at the TAC meeting and the McLaughlin Phase Two project.
So, thank you for taking the time to listen to this one. I know it's a topic of interest, so I thought I'd bring it. Comes up, TRIMET comes up at a lot of meetings we have, might as well, at the Southend Concept Line meeting. So, a couple things. City manager forwarded information about an open house in Oregon City that TRIMET is sponsoring. It's coming up on March 4th, which is a Tuesday night. It's, it's from 6:00 to 7:30. It's at the Pioneer Community Center at 6:15 Fifth Street, and they've noted that that is accessible by bus line 32. If you need to get there by bus, you can get there that way. The other thing that I wanted to point out is TRIMET will be at the Transportation Advisory Committee meeting this month, which is next Tuesday, and they're planning to talk about their Portland-Milwaukee service plan. So that's something that Oregon City's involved with, because we're in that southeast corridor, but it's not as, as pointed as the, as the next round of public involvement that they're going to be looking at, which is the whole corridor. So this is more about bus enhancement as, as it's associated with the new MAX line that comes to Milwaukee. So, anyway, I wanted to mention both of those items, so that if you're interested in getting another opportunity to talk to TRIMET, both those, I think the TAC and the open house will, will be fun-filled for those who want to communicate with TRIMET.
Can you mention when that TAC meeting is again, please?
It's on Tuesday the 18th, I think, February 18th. Let me have a, let's see, I've got my calendar here, I just want to make sure I've got that right. Yes, Tuesday the 18th, so a week from tonight at 6:00 PM. Just wanted to let you know that the McLaughlin Boulevard project, Phase Two project, which is from Clackamas River Bridge on Highway 99 to Dunes Drive, we're about to have a pre-construction meeting that'll happen next week, and then they're going to start construction. They're really supposed to start by March 3rd, and that's critical, because where there is some tree removals along Firestone Alley and in front of the motel, can't remember the name of the motel right now, but right there on Dunes Drive across from McDonald's.
River Shore.
River Shore, there you go, thank you. They'll, so anyway, those tree removals are required based on the improvements that we're doing. And with that come, will come a lot more plantings and some large, larger trees that will help mitigate some of that damage, and in the long run will be a lot more robust than what you see there now. So just keep in mind, that's always the first thing that people see is trees coming down. And we've worked with some of our more notable tree, people who value trees, and we're actually working with them to kind of help remove some of the plants that have been planted along there, and they want to use them on a couple other little city projects. So we're hoping that that will help to ensure our buy-in to tree removals along there.
Yeah, train those beavers to come out of the cove and come out everywhere.
Police, police can help them get back home too, we know.
They're pretty good at that.
Sorry.
That was a great, that was great publicity.
Yeah. You didn't sign up for that, did you?
I didn't hear that story, what's the story?
So I next want to announce that the March Meals for Wheels, Meals on Wheels event at the Pioneer Community Center is Thursday, February 20th at 7:30. And I have an invitation here to pass around in case any of you want to see that. And then Nancy, I'd have a, we want to give you a little update on our right-of-way ordinance enforcement, our, our implementation. As I sent you an email a few weeks ago telling you that was going better than expected, and I think that night I told you we'd received six or seven applications. We only knew for sure of about five primary users of our right-of-way, and to date, we have 15 applications.
Good.
And I'm going to let Nancy say a little bit more about this, but it was about two years ago when we started the dialogue with the county, well, when we discovered we had several thousand linear feet of dark fiber in our right-of-way that we weren't aware of. And when those conversations various first began, one of the county's top administrators said to me, "Mr. Fraser, you have no idea what's out there in your right-of-way. You wouldn't believe it, you're not aware of it." And that's when I realized that she was absolutely correct.
Correct, yep.
And since that time, this city and this commission and your staff have, you've adopted new ordinances and policies around this, and we are now, for the first time, I think, really actively professionally managing the city right-of-way as a resource that we should have been for, in the past, but we are certainly doing now. And other cities are starting to take notice, note of this, and of course, we're learning a lot of what we're doing from some of the larger cities like Eugene, who have been so successful with this. And through that process, we have, we sent out initially over 300 letters to potential users of the right-of-way and a list which we got from PUC. And because we didn't know, and we may have missed somebody, by the way, that's on that list, there may be somebody out there that we're not aware of that's not on that list, but from that, we've, we've gotten these applications, and these are some, some of these are companies we've never heard of before. We don't even know how extensive their use of the right-of-way is, but we were going to, are going to be finding out. And so we will get a handle on this, and eventually it won't be such a burdensome thing, but a while ago, I know Kathy, Commissioner Roth was talking about the commission's workload and said, "Well, it looks like things are lightening up, let's talk about the charter." And Nancy's reaction was, "Oh, my God." And the reason is, she's very good at hiding work overload issues, but, but, you know, and we asked for this problem, so we're not blaming anybody but ourselves. But it has been an enormous amount of work, and the more these applications come in, we're enthusiastic about this, and we think it's a wonderful thing for the city, and I think ultimately why it's going to be happy with the consequences. But for us at the front end, we're just trying to keep up with it right now. And you've seen some of the enforcement letters, and you won't be surprised, I think you may be surprised by one of them, but I'm going to turn the rest over to Nancy, because I think I missed a couple of things there that you might want to share.
Okay, thank you. Not too much, but so we are about nine days post-compliance deadline, which was the fourth, or did I not add that right? A week plus two.
Yeah.
Anyway, about nine days out. He's right, we have received about 15 applications, and they're all in review. They're, they're being sent in, little tweaks here and there, or somebody forgets a form or that sort of thing. So we have to go through each one. One has been finalized, and the license, and just to you know, John Lewis signed the very first license yesterday.
Woo-hoo!
And, and that was with Tri-City.
Nice.
So we'll be delivering that to them very soon here. And then this week, code enforcement and chief ban work together to develop a compliance letter, and today we mailed that letter to two agencies that, and gave them 10 days in which to comply before formal enforcement action begins. So that, and then as they come to our attention, we will be sending, sending more. We just learned this week also that the VoIP, Voice Over Internet Protocol services, we, that's what we have here in the city, our phone system is a VoIP system, and that is also part of the right-of-way ordinance. So, you know, we just learned that, so we have to get that letter together off to them and any other VoIP service providers within the city. The first quarterly payment is due March 31st, and there's a 30-day grace period, so we won't see anything until April 30th, and even with that, we have allowed a grace period until July 1st, this first time around.
Right.
But, the new right-of-way coordinator position closes this coming Friday, and we hope to have that person on board by April 1st to, to relieve the pressure a little bit from the rest of us. But it would take a while for that person to get up to speed as well. So that's about it. Did I forget anything?
I think you got it.
Okay.
Thank you. Then also want to remind the commissioners that next Monday, February 17th, as President's Day, and City Hall will be closed that day, for the holiday.
And probably no school too.
One other, David, can I mention one other thing? I know we've been through a fair amount of weather already, but we're still...
Thank you for taking care of the streets.
Yeah, I was going to say.
It was a good, good, good job.
I got, I got comments from people from outside of Oregon City that came through, comparing other cities to us.
That was all...
And we were, and we were positively compared.
And we were, and we were positively compared.
Great.
If you could get here, the driving was good.
I enjoyed reading the, what was it, the operation update?
Yep.
So, that was Martin Montalvo and, and team, and they did an excellent job. And so, yeah, I think, I think what I'm...
I wanna credit the city manager, too. The updates, I've never had those kind of updates on these kinds of things.
Bewildered by the...
No, not at all.
I was afraid that was what we're doing. They were very, very helpful and very well appreciated.
But Commissioner Roth gets that at her job, and then, and then her volunteer position, here she gets more. But I'm glad that you appreciated that.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
Well, that's good feedback, because we're moving into a wind and high rain event.
Yeah.
I got that update.
There was a bit of a question whether or not that was overload of information, and, you know, we go through a lot of weather in this community. So, trying to strike that balance is a question that, that I was having, how much is too much? So, just know that we can continue to forward that kind of information if it's, if that's what you're looking for. But as of tonight, we're expecting winds to pick up, gusting in this part of the country up to maybe 40 miles an hour. We've got saturated soils now, so...
Have we had any landslide events?
We have not had any reports of landslide events.
Okay, 'cause we had one today.
Weas, Portland. Would you make your wheeze be careful, please?
It is quite likely that, you know, landslides in these kinda conditions is when we see them. But I just wanted to again assure you that Public Works has got its chainsaws sharpened and trucks ready, and all those kinds of provisions available for fallen trees. And I'm sure PGE's on high alert. Remember, PGE, they deal with priority sites first. So, if, you know, your house is not necessarily their first priority, I'm sorry, they typically look at hospitals and other major public facilities first, and then they start working their ways out into the neighborhood. So, just keep that in mind before you, and light your candles, keep your candles handy in case you need them. And...
Be careful, they can burn. Lights rather than candles, please.
Say that again?
Use headlamps rather than candles.
Headlamps, right.
They don't cause fires.
There you go.
They don't cause fire.
Good idea.
Are there any creeks that you're concerned about for flooding?
Well, the river, well, creeks, yes. As you know, Oregon City is, when, we've got short runs of creeks, because we're kind of at the hilltop, but they're very flashy. So, we see when, you know, events like this, they, they spark off and they flood, and then they decrease, you know, pretty quickly. We've been all over our problem areas already. I mean, we're thinking of those things, and we haven't had many issues. And the river levels are also gonna be high, but they're not at flood stage. So, if we had, well, let's, let's not go to where we could go.
Yeah, yeah.
We'll save that for later.
Hopefully, our weather pattern will dry up a little bit.
And the last but not least, this afternoon, late this afternoon, Chief Ben and I had a, I think, a very positive meeting with the school district on some facilities and property questions that are mostly executive session, so I can't comment on the details, but it was a very positive meeting, and we're gonna be looking for some correspondence from them. And I'm expecting that'll be coming pretty quickly. So, we'll brief you in full in executive session, probably at your next meeting.
Great.
So, that's it. That's it. Absolutely.
Skip back a minute, I just thought of a future agenda item. Sorry, running a little slow here. But when I was at the last county's dinner, meeting over Lake Oswego, I had a discussion with Lake Oswego and Wes Lynn, and they were interested in talking about a coalition of us getting together and possibly talking about TriMet.
Oh, yeah.
That'd be great.
That'd be great.
Yeah, I think we need to discuss, discuss that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Commissioner Roth, I might, and maybe Betty wants to chime in on this, but at the C4 level, which is all the Clackamas County, well, this particular meeting is their morning meeting, which is the metro regional...
Subcommittee.
There are subcommittee of the C4. So, the C4 is all, all the cities within the county and the county, and the C4 is the metro, the metro C4 Subcommittee is, is just those cities within the metro area. So, we meet regularly. They're also, in fact, we had to cancel the meeting because of snow, but they're fully engaged in this idea of talking about transit options.
Yes.
So, and I know the city manager's office is looking pretty hard at other transit alternatives, so...
Yeah, they were very interested, so...
Yeah, and that was a good point, because of whether we did cancel that C4 evening meeting, so that will be held in, I wanna say April, February, March, might be March, because they don't have a meeting, no, it'd be April, 'cause they don't have a meeting in March. So, we'll have that presentation in April.
But it's interesting how other communities are kind of wanting to...
It seems to me that they're a lot further down the road than we are.
I don't know. According to the group at the C4 Subcommittee, they're not much further down than we are. So...
Commissioner Roth, did you say you'd spoken to representatives from Wes Lynn and Lake Oswego?
Yeah, who's the guy that was the manager, he's the book writer?
Sandy.
Yeah.
Oh, Sandy's old...
Lazenby is the city manager from Lake Oswego.
Yeah, right. And then, I think it was Jody I was talking to, Wes Lynn.
Jody Carson, yeah.
Jody Carson's on the C4.
Yeah.
Well, I don't know if it sounds almost like we should, I don't know, maybe it would be better to check in with C4. And what I can do is I'll take this topic to our regional city managers group, 'cause we meet periodically, and just kind of find out from, at their level, if they, if some of them have had the same questions we've had about the bang for the buck we're getting from TriMet. I think Oregon City's gonna find that we're a little bit unique in the...
No, we're not.
I, I mean, we're a little bit unique in that we pay, we pay more buck.
Then, yes, yes.
I think that's where, where we would probably end up. But that still doesn't mean that some of the other cities aren't looking at...
Happy Valley gets no bank.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, and, but I guess where this is going for me is if, if we are at some point gonna be looking at our version of the Canby regional transit, or they...
Something else, whatever.
Or, I think they call it SMART over in Wilsonville. I like that. I bet Paul Egger likes that.
I'm sure he does.
Is he there? I thought he would be here. That's his word. But I really think that that would be something to look at on a regional basis, because the more of us that are in it, if we could form some sort of regional response...
Well, they're talking, they're already to the point of talking about prime election times, because there's, if cities over 10,000 withdraw, it has to go to a region of the, of an election of the entire TriMet region. So, Portland would have to vote on us.
Yep.
And so, they were talking about strategies for elections and things.
But you can only withdraw from TriMet every five years, and that window closed last year.
Well, your direction to us, I'm trying to recall it, but I believe your direction to us was to go develop a proposal to, to do a feasibility study on this, and we're gonna bring that back to you in your next budget cycle, which would be a little, about a year from now. We'd be bringing that back as a potential item to put into your work plan and, and then pursue a feasibility study. And from that, I expect that feasibility to study would identify all the timelines, the potential other regional partners. But it's great that C4's talking about that, because that's something we, it's just really helpful to know that we're not the only ones thinking about whether we're getting a good value for what we're putting in.
Right, and being underserved.
And I hope TriMet is paying attention, because, you know, it's, and I hope their unions are paying attention.
I'll be interested to see what your report from the city managers...
Me, too.
Maybe...
Me, too. I'm really interested in it. I mean, some of them, like Canby'll say, or Wilsonville, 'cause we've already solved this problem.
Yes, yes.
But maybe they, too, would be interested in expanding and, and, you know, the cities could end up then having more ownership of this, and a different board and a different structure. There are ways to solve this problem.
Yeah.
And I think what's really, what I remember our conversation when TriMet's officials were here, we were saying, "Look, we don't necessarily wanna create a new mousetrap, but if this one doesn't work, we're gonna, we're gonna do something."
Well, we definitely don't wanna take on more work, I mean, but if it's for the better of the citizens...
And they must be getting that message from other cities, it sounds like.
I'm sure they are.
I think so, yeah.
You know, if you force cities to find solutions, they will get together and they will do that. So, I'll, I'll report back what the rest of the city managers have to say, 'cause I'm very curious about that myself. That's all. Thanks.
Thank you. Anything else, sort of, to go to the order?
But the difference just got here, so, do we have anything else we can come up with?
We waited just for you to get your...[1792.12]